I will now call back to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting for November 19th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Adamo. Mrs. Schohan.
Present.
Mrs. Bernal.
Here.
Mr. Remus.
Here.
Ms. Yon.
Here.
Mr. Carrar.
Here.
Ms. Engelberg. Motion carries.
I will now ask all members of the board, administration, and community to stand at attention, facing the flag with their right hand over their heart to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We were originally going to start with the President's report, but nobody wants to hear from me right now. We'd all like to hear from the spotlight Everett. So we'll start with the student spotlight and excellent, Megan will kick us off. Thank you.
So we did things a little differently. This is going to just play and loop through. These are just pictures of what we're talking about. Thank you allowing, for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Megan Agonrau, the principal at Everett Elementary, and I'm excited to be joined by our Student Leadership Team Board Clark Anderson, Vian Choan, and Tess McAvick, and Mrs. Stacy Obispo, a fourth grade teacher, all of whom played a key role in our recent Veterans Day Assembly. This year, we made a conscious decision to shift our approach to the assembly. What was once an event hosted solely by fourth grade became a school-wide effort with every grade participating in some way. The result was an incredibly meaningful and memorable experience for all involved. It was a true reflection of our school community coming together to honor our veterans. Not only was the assembly a resounding success, but it also highlighted several of our Portrait of a Learner framework aspects. Our staff and students exhibited adaptability in order to navigate a new approach to this event. Their willingness to be open-minded about adjusting this Everett tradition and flexible with assuming new roles within the planning process made the event a huge success. Today, we are excited to share with you the highlights of the experience as well as how it helped our students grow and embody these characteristics. So now SLT President Clark Anderson will share how his experience was leading the assembly.
Hi, I'm Clark Anderson, a fourth grader at Everett Elementary School and president of Everett Student Leadership Team. I am here today to talk to you about Everett's Veterans Day Assembly. Preparing for the Veterans Day Assembly strengthened my skills of confidence and communication because it was my first time speaking in front of the entire school. I had to research the history of Veterans Day, organize the information, and then write my speech. Finally, I had to practice my speech so that I was able to effectively communicate the importance of Veterans Day so everybody could honor the veterans in the room. The whole school benefited from creating the assembly together because every grade level got to participate, which made everyone feel good and included. As president, this is important to me because I wanted everyone's voice to be heard and have everyone feel that they belong. Most importantly, I wanted the veterans to feel appreciated. Thank you for having me here tonight. I hope I can come again soon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vian Amit Choan, and I'm the Vice President of Student Leadership Team at Everett Elementary. My grandma taught me that the whole is always stronger than the sum of its parts. This was the case when the students of Everett came together to create the Veterans Day Assembly. Each grade played their part to make the event a huge success and more importantly, to attain the common goal of celebrating our veterans. This is a major pillar of citizenship. The kindergarteners and first graders made decorations for the library and gym. The second graders made cards of, for the veterans. The third graders sang the Veterans Day song. The fourth graders invited veterans from their family and presented speeches about them. And the teachers made slides about their family members that are veterans or are serving. This is a perfect example on how the fist has a more powerful impact than each individual finger. All grades are stronger together when they pool their talents instead of each working separately. The students came together and it did not matter what age they were, their gender, their skin color, or their personality. Everyone celebrated the veterans that came in person as well as those that were on the sideshow presentation. I specifically learned the value of teamwork, hard work, and taking responsibility for the greater good. I also learned bravery because I helped lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the assembly. I'm very proud of our school for coming together on this special occasion, exchanging ideas, and uniting to pay tribute to our veterans. This is the definition of citizenship and its power lies on the collective actions of individuals. I will end with a quote from President John F. Kennedy, "Efforts and courage are not enough without purpose and direction." Thank you for your time and a special thank you to Mr. Carl Carrar, who is a veteran.
Hi, my name is Tess McAvick. When I think of the word empathy, I think of kindness. I think of sharing. I think of trying out someone else's perspective. It's like you get to put on someone else's shoes for a bit, which is really important because then you get to learn someone, someone's story. When we take the time to learn someone else's story, we can feel what they were going through. Our veterans fought for this country to keep us all safe. That would be hard. They did it all for us and had to risk their lives. I liked participating in the Veterans Day Assembly because I think it made the veterans feel heard and seen. And I got to say thank you to them. I think as a school, this experience helped us to build empathy because we learned about how the veterans felt and how they sacrificed for us. It felt good to do something for them in return.
Hi, my name is Stacy Obispo. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Everett School. Good evening, members of the board. I'm thrilled to share with you how my students recently applied critical thinking skills in a meaningful Veterans Day project. This year, the fourth graders at Everett were given the unique opportunity to invite veteran family members to our assembly. Rather than simply writing a standard essay, we challenged them to create speeches that not only honored their veterans, but also explored deeper questions about service, sacrifice, and bravery. To accomplish this, students interviewed the veterans in their lives, learning about personal stories and experiences. As they crafted their speeches, students had to consider not only the information they were presenting, but also how their words might affect their audience emotionally. This added a layer of complexity, pushing them to think critically about the power of language and its role in shaping meaning. The project became an exercise in empathy and effective communication, skills that will serve them far beyond the classroom. Ultimately, this project allowed students to practice reflection, organize complex ideas, and express themselves in ways that were both impactful and meaningful. I'm incredibly proud of how they embraced this challenge and demonstrated their growth as thoughtful thinkers and communicators. Thank you for your continued support in nurturing their development in these essential areas.
So in closing, our goal this year is to weave the Portrait of a Learner into everything we do at Everett. And this is just one example of doing so, but it was a huge success. And I'm super proud of the SLT and the fourth grade for leading the efforts, helping organize it, and then incorporating the entire school into it. So thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much for that excellent presentation and special thanks to Clark, Vian, and Tess. You guys were, you know, we appreciate your leadership at Everett and you guys did a fantastic job presenting tonight. So thank you for coming out and I believe we have a photo opportunity. So if you'd like to join us up here, we appreciate it. You guys also, yeah, please feel free to enjoy the rest of your evening. If you want to stay and listen to the board meeting, you're welcome, but this may be a great time for you to go on your way. I should have said that nicer. We want you to stay. You're welcome to stay. All right, we're going to move on to the President's report, which will be brief tonight. And I do not want to steal the thunder of some presentation we're going to have later on, but certainly top of mind for us is the Illinois State Report Card that came out since the last meeting we had. And there's lots of good news in the Illinois State Report Card. However, there's lots of room for improvement. We've already had a lot of discussions within, with the administration, within the board about those results. And there's been improvement in lots of areas, which is fantastic. There's also lots of areas where there's room for improvement. And we knew this was going to be a process. I know as recently as last week, Megan and I were speaking with Dr. Fitzsimmons. And what I loved hearing from you was talking about how competitive you are. And yes, we were not settling for just getting better. We want to be the best. And so I know the administration is, has that sense of urgency and has that drive. And we're going to continue to see results. And I look forward to hearing more details about that report card later on this evening.
Thank you, kind sir. Jumping right in, we will dive into the report card in the first item for the superintendent's report. Afterwards, I'll give an update on the, an opportunity for the community to learn more about the referendum at 1:15, talk about the food drive, and then finish with a grateful market recap. The Illinois Report Card presentation, I will begin and then kick it over to Dr. Fitzsimmons, and she'll go into a little bit more detail as we continue to share the story, successes, and opportunities for growth with our report card. I presented on this a couple of times to the executive APT, now DPM, this morning, the APT meeting that was held there. And I began by talking about this being the fourth year of my journey here in Lake Forest. And the first year in any leadership, this is a kind of a philosophy around leadership, the first year, I believe, is the time to listen and learn. Second year to make some changes, pull some levers, see what changes you think as a leader would impact the feedback you gathered in that first year. And then year three, you see, did it work? And how school systems work is I don't really have a good idea with the team if those levers worked in year three until the report card is released in year four, which is what just happened at the end of October. Because remember, this year's report card is a reflection of the data from the spring assessment or the end of year three. If we emphasize any point in this presentation, it should be that we have not arrived and we are not done. We merely have some momentum that we are continuing to fine tune to make sure that we are making progress on not only the board goals, but the metrics that are aligned to the strategic plan that is aligned to the Portrait of a Learner. And I thought our students tonight masterfully interwove the importance of the competencies and how those competencies are coming to life with the student experience. So thank you for giving us this time, and I will kick it over to Dr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you. I'm excited to be presenting here on behalf of the district. And yes, as you said, Mr. Remus, I am very competitive. And while I know that we have a lot to celebrate, as we spoke about last week, we have some really exciting work ahead. And my goal with the rest of this team and under the leadership of Dr. Montgomery, we are looking to be at the top of our peer group. So that's something that I'm going to end with at the end of this presentation. But as you can see here, our report is a snapshot of what was in Dr. Montgomery's communication when the report card was first released on the 30th of October. That was like the Super Bowl, excuse my sports reference, Mr. Carrar. I felt we were in an exciting day. It was the biggest day for us of the year. We sat in a room and we took apart all of the data and we looked and we knew that the designations were coming. We were excited to see a lot of growth. As you can see, there were some shifts in going from commendable to exemplary by DPM West and by Everett. And then, as many of us know, we've talked about it, the communication was very clear about Cherokee in regards to, there was a slight dip with commendable. And as you know, these were our reports from, this was the work of last year. So this work and these designations currently are going to be, they are, they are things that are being dealt with already. So in the spring, we set action plans in place with very clear action steps to make sure that we knew the journey we were going to be on this year. So when the school year started, the action plans are, they have already been in place. So as we move on to the next slide, one of the things that we wanted to highlight is, and the strategic, the strategic plan, our metrics for this year, you can see that in 2024, we have the percentile goal of being at the 75th percentile all the way up to the 95th percentile in 2008. And what percentile means in this category pertaining to proficiency simply means that compared to the rest of the schools in the state or districts in the state, this is where we rank, where we would be ranking according to these metrics comparatively. So proficiency, just to clarify what proficiency means, proficiency means the number of students in math and ELA who are meeting or exceeding the standards. So these are all of the students that are doing exactly what the state is setting us out to do. Growth is a different measure, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at our assessment report in December. And so what you can see, and this is exciting, is that we have actually made that goal. We are at, in ELA, we are at the 86th percentile already on a trajectory up towards the 95th percentile that we're shooting for in 2028. So we've exceeded our 2024 goal. We jumped considerably 7.3% from last year. If you look at this graph, this is also a snapshot of what was in Dr. Montgomery's communication on the 30th. The blue is what we all did this year, the top line being the district as an average, and then each of the schools. The green is last year, so you can get a visual there of growth. Moving on to math, this is going to look like we slipped a little bit, but essentially we dropped with our math scores overall as a district, less than 0.5%. This is on our docket in terms of what we're focusing on. The state as a, as a whole is focusing on math literacy. They really focused on reading literacy, and now the state is pushing for the math work. In this particular case here in the district, you can see some of the differences. Overall, the district is definitely working on the math proficiency. However, you can see some of the amazing growth in, and I'll just give a little shout out to Everett. We had, and I will share this in the next slide, but Everett has the highest math proficiency on record. We just actually, I did some calculations. We thought it was Cherokee years ago, but it was actually Everett.
We'll ask Dr. Fitzsimmons to show her humility.
Yes, I know. I'm so sorry. Oh, the competitiveness. It's terrible. I can't wait to call Dr. McHugh. Okay, so some of our D67 highlights, did someone change that slide awfully quick right there? We did see a lot of growth. So some of our highlights, the Cherokee saw a 5.9% increase in their math proficiency. Everett achieved its highest math and ELA scores on record. And obviously, I had just mentioned that last part. Sheridan achieved its highest ELA scores on record as well. Deer Path West achieved its highest ELA in math as well. And then Deer Path East achieved its best ELA performance. So what, one of the best things I think we can say is that we have not only seen some of our best scores on record, but we also can say that we have surpassed our, our pre-pandemic scores. So we're really excited about that. And moving on to the next slide, and just to wrap, is that we have coming soon our December Assessment Report. In that report, we'll be addressing a little bit more specifically some of the subgroups, some of the comparisons with our peer group. As I had mentioned, I alluded to the fact that I would like to be in the top of that peer group. We have, we have 18 schools that we compare ourselves to at this time. Those 18 schools that are truly in the top 5% of the state are the ones that we're comparing ourselves to in this area. And we continue to remain in the lower half or the bottom third in some categories if we're comparing ourselves with math, ELA, and science. That still means we're doing well in the state, but to the schools that we are looking to compare ourselves with, I would like to, and Dr. Montgomery and the team would like to see our scores in proficiency go up. One positive cliffhanger that I can leave you on is that in ELA, District 67 did have the highest growth of all of those 18 schools at 14% growth. So that was a really exciting indicator. But one of the things that I will also discuss in December is just some of the action steps that we're taking this year, and we'll have some progress reporting to present to you in the coming new year. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzsimmons. Before I move on in my report, does anybody have any questions relating to the report card, given what I shared or what Dr. Fitzsimmons shared?
You mentioned that we would discuss some of the, like, more granular plans in December, but could you just give like maybe like a broad overview of some of the things that you would be looking at as far as like what is working and what isn't working and how you're going to tackle those challenges?
Sure, absolutely. Well, first of all, the wonderful work of the Strategic Plan Committee and the board priorities, as well as the school leaders who worked with their building leadership teams in terms of creating a SIP plan or a school improvement plan. We started thinking about this in the spring. And then we, in some of our beginning July ILTs, we really put together a clear vision for what we were going to do to align to the strategic plan. So some of the things we're looking at is we're looking at our special education services because we have several metrics and indicators that show that those students with IAPs are not growing. And we know that there's something called an achievement or an opportunity gap, but we noticed that there are certain pockets in the district that are growing incredibly well, and then there are some pockets that aren't. So we're trying to look at the, the areas where we're seeing success. We're doing currently a continuum of services audit where our special services team, Jenny Sterpen, Joanne Ford Halverson, and Molly Escobar are going to the schools and they're interviewing principals and the Department of Student Services teams. And they're asking for examples and stories, narratives on what's happening, how is this happening? And we're extrapolating themes of what is going on. And so what we're really trying to do is put together a story and a plan for certain subgroups like that. Another example is that we're looking at Ekra, and Ekra is a reporting tool that we have that synthesizes all of our data. And essentially, what we're doing is we are looking at themes and trends of data that's either, we have high achieving, possibly low growth, or we have incredible high percentages of high growth and, and low percentages of low growth. So what we want to do is we want to look at those pockets of the organization and see what's working well there. One example is we then go to a particular grade. If we're seeing a theme or a pattern, we're going to a grade and we're seeing what are some of the standards on the assessments that might indicate a lack of clarity, or there's a skill or a standard that just isn't, it's not looking good. So what we're doing with our coaches, Jenny Parkhurst and Denise Galcianos at the district level, they're then working with the principals and working with the data teams, and they're diving in to see what those skills and those strands and those questions look like. And ultimately, then they work with the grade level teams and they try to put questions that are similar to those that are on the state reporting assessment like IAR. And they're embedding them all along the way so that it's not just test prep at the last minute, so that these are questions that students see throughout the year. And we're just trying to laser focus that work. And those are some of the ways that we're seeing growth and things that we've done in different areas across the district. Does that help?
And Megan, I'll add to that two things. One, district-wide, we are focusing on engagement and what that looks like in the classroom. So the first two years, we pulled, albeit complex levers, but easier to swap. So we, we pulled the lever of let's change the curriculum. And we changed illustrious math, or to illustrious math, we changed to amplify. Now, we are really focusing on actual teaching of the curriculum and how are our students engaged in the learning process? So what does that mean? Well, we have to figure out what our definition is of engagement. Are we looking at teamwork? Are we looking at communication and collaboration? Are we looking at real-world application? Are we looking at critical thinking? Or are we looking at a combination of all of those things embedded in our lessons? So our students are taking ownership of their learning because there's a great deal of research that is if you increase student engagement, you increase student achievement. So district-wide, Renee is leading the push to increase student engagement around all grade levels and all disciplines. The second thing I would tell you is we've made structural changes in areas that we have been focused on. You know some of the changes that we made in Cherokees or last spring. We also made some changes in fifth grade because we were mindful of how the shift to block was being distributed between ELA or English Language Arts and Social Studies. And we want to make sure that enough time is being dedicated to amplify in fifth grade. Remember, fifth grade is still elementary, but we have placed it in a middle school. So the fifth grade schedule is different from that of six, seven, and eight. And last year, we thought maybe we weren't spending enough time in ELA, and social studies was eating away. So that change happened. Then in the middle school, we also added 20 to 30 minutes of intervention and enrichment time to really capitalize on those 80-minute periods to offer real-time support to our students during the school day because we thought that they would benefit from that time that they didn't have previously as recent as last year. So we're making structural changes. We're making teaching changes as well as personnel changes. A lot has happened and a lot will continue to happen as we continue to track our progress.
Am I going back a couple of slides to the math, IAR math? Okay, so looking at the percentages here and then looking at our goals, our board goals, priority one, academic progress. Our target was 95 percentile in a state on IAR proficiency in ELA and math by 2028. I think we're, we are off as a board on our goals. And while we may be looking at proficiency, we're already there by, by the term, by the terms that you're using here. I don't know if that was the intent of our goals. So maybe we have to work on a clarification on exactly what that is. If, if, if I'm wrong, you're saying 96 percentile, we're in the 96 percentile and that's what our goal states right here. Clearly, that's not a stretch goal for 2028. So what, we may have to go back, or what do you, what would you propose for us going back and revising our goal to better meet and match a growth that happens with IAR readiness? It does match that what our goal is actually matches what is actually posted on the score, the grades for our schools.
Let me ask a question and then see if it's still, because I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing. Maybe we are.
I, that's exactly my point. We're not talking about the same thing.
No, but this, this graph here is the percent of students who are proficient, whereas the board goal is the percentile, which is relative to everyone else in the state. So those are two different percentages?
I 100% agree with you.
Okay.
So thank you for restating it, but that's exactly what I'm getting at. If we are 96 percentile in the state and our goal is to be 95th, then it's a worthless goal. I think we have to correct our language and our goals to better match and exactly match what is stated on IAR. That's what I'm proposing.
If you go back one more slide, two more slides, actually, or, yeah, perfect. So this is the slide that we were speaking about earlier, and you are correct. The goal, the goal is to be in the 95th percentile for math and ELA by 2028. We are not there yet for ELA. We're close, being 93% in the 93rd percentile, but we have exceeded that goal already for math. So So I guess what I would say is if you would, as a board, but this is, these are not your board goals, these are the strategic plan metrics, but they align with your board goals. So if we want to look at changing those metrics because we've already exceeded them, I think that's something we can talk about. And as I mentioned, with the peer comparables that I will be talking about in December, if we surpass our peers, we will be in the 99th percentile. And sure, that's what we're shooting for.
Yeah, and I completely agree with that because when we drafted these goals, we always talked about how it's a living document. It's a document we're always going to evaluate, reevaluate, and see if we need to move our targets because we learn new information every year. So that's an excellent point, Carl, that, you know, perhaps that's a metric we need to relook at.
I guess just in the few years that I've been on the board, this has always been one of those funny little numbers, that it's hard to interpret it because if you look at it specifically of District 67 at 62% in math, well, that, and generally, as I've grown up, that's a failing grade. But that is not a failing grade. So what are the intermediate steps that, anybody in the community, take a look at that scorecard and go, well, they're 62, next year they should be at 65, year after that at 70. What, where should we be? And when we put together the boards, I think it was very easy to get confused on the terminology, and here we are. So that's what I'm saying, our goal, it doesn't match maybe what our intent was to measure.
I can completely agree with you on that. And I will say, the only thing about percentile is that it's a moving target because it depends on how your peers do around you. And not just your immediate peers, but how all of the state school, or all of the schools in the state do. I still think it's worth exploring, and I don't think that there's anything wrong with saying we want to be in the 99th percentile. And if we're looking at where we are today, and granted, we're looking always at cohort data. So if we're looking at this year, third and fourth grades, IAR average in one school, for example, was 79.7% proficiency. Well, the new group coming up, even though we could set the metric of, oh, we want to now be 82%, it may shift because the new cohort of students coming up may not quite be there yet. So some of these metrics are hard to truly move up, just keep moving up, keep moving up. It depends on the trajectories based on historical data. So what I would say is I don't think there's anything wrong with shooting for being in the 99th percentile, in my opinion. It's just that it will be dependent on cohort and also peer, peer districts.
I think another way, and we can have, we should have this discussion, because we're going to be moving from the 95th to the 99th percentile, back and forth from year to year as the cohort changes, it may be more appropriate to say that the goal is that we will, the district will fall within this range every year, independent of the cohort group. So we are shooting between the 96 and the 99th percentile year over year, hoping that we're going to see progress, but that is the expectation. We are going to be, our goal will be in that, we'll perform in the top third of our 18 districts. And that's what our target is, hoping that we're going to show growth year over year, but it's just a static expectation of performance for our students.
But if you go to the next slide, again, this is where the rubber hits the road, right? You're talking, it's a percentage of students meeting or exceeding state standards. That's not a variable number compared to your peers, correct?
You're, can you say that again, Mr. Crowe?
This is not dependent on our peers. This is, these are the state standards.
Correct, correct. When you look at proficiency, proficiency is simply the number of students in your district that have met or exceeded the standards. So it's a percentage. So this, essentially, if you had 100 students, oh my goodness, I'm so blind.
That's, you're right, it'd be 62 and change, right?
Right. If you had 100 students, you would say that, is it 62 up there? 67, 60, in the district, 67.9% of our students, or 67, 68 kids out of 100, met or exceeded the standard.
Right, so I am reading it correctly. That's awesome. I'm a knuckle-dragger, but I got that. So whatever the percentage, I guess my whole point is, the 93rd percentile of all Illinois nonselect public schools is awesome. It's great that we're comparison, we should shoot for being a high percentage, 99 or whatever. We're the top third of our peers, but I think that number is more important. We want our students to achieve more, and then that will raise, that tide will raise all boats and will naturally get better.
Absolutely.
So that was my proposal to everybody here, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
I do think the more we raise our proficiency, the higher up in the percentile, the percentile will get. So that's where we're focused. We're looking at proficiency, and obviously, the state really values growth as well. So when we look at the designations, it's a formula that not only includes your proficiency rate, but also the percentage of growth that your school made. So that is a huge component. So we're valuing both.
I think it will have to be, not that the previous conversation was more thoughtful, but we will have to really look at what is an appropriate ceiling. Because if you're at an 85th, 85th, 85th percent here on proficiency, and you're at the 99.9 percentile, I don't know how much higher we can go beyond 85%. You can have a stretch goal, but there will be a saturation moment where you can't go any higher, or it is statistically improbable that you will go any higher than a percentage on proficiency that translates to a 99.9 percentile in performance in the state.
Just in looking at our peer data, which I shared in the board report, the highest peer group that we have scored an 82.4% in proficiency. They are most likely in the 99th percentile.
So I didn't mean to workshop this here. I just really was a point to bring up that I think we need to adjust our goals to better match what's, what's going on.
Absolutely.
And if 95 is not the correct number, even though we would love it to be 100, that 100 of 100 students meet and exceed all standards, it, there's a hard reality that comes into things, and that's the discussion I think needs to have.
I'm glad that you brought it up, and we definitely need to talk about it more. Any other report card questions? Okay, December, you will have an assessment report, and we will continue to dissect the data that we bring forward and hopefully continue robust discussions such as this. And this is the power of having these types of dialogues. A couple announcements, thank you for being here. A couple announcements. Our first community forum since construction has commenced will be on December 12th this next month at 6:30 at the RMA. It is an important checkpoint because at this point, we have spent approximately, we've done about $11 million worth of work, and we chose, which was on time and under budget, which is the thing that I hope you hear as taxpayers for the next five years, over and over. But we picked the date because on December 10th, we will be presenting to the board between $60 and $70 million worth of bids for Phase 1. So we will know two days later exactly where those bids fell, and we will be able to not only provide an update on the enabling phase, which is the $11 million I just referenced, but foreshadow Phase 1, which will take us through the summer of '25 and the summer of '26, acknowledging that work will begin as early as, late winter of '25. Excuse me, and will continue throughout both the '25, '26 school year and the '26 and '27 school year for Phase 1. Once Phase 1 is underway, we will begin Phase 2 as we do the final stretch for the '27, '28 school year. Am I right on numbers? Close enough. '27, '28, and hopefully be done then the summer of '28. Knocking on wood when I say that, which seems like a distant date in the future, but time is flying. I want to give a shout-out to the APT for their Thanksgiving food drive. I was at, I feel like I'm at Sunset every day, so I made sure that I thanked the manager on duty, I think I was there last night, because Sunset donated all of the bags for us. The students, you may have saw, I was at Everett on Friday, I was at Everett and Sheridan on Friday morning, and the students take this competition exceptionally seriously. There was some chanting for first graders as I was walking by about that they were winning, and there was also a great injustice because apparently there was a brouhaha about a second graders taking some cans or something, and I was enjoying the competitive spirit. But this is just another example of our community coming together to support communities that are less fortunate than us, and I want to thank everybody who participated and for the APT for all of their work. When I got to Everett on Friday, there were two APT moms, they didn't have enough room in their cars because of the donations. We were loading them in, they were trying to find more cars, and they were just giving up time to help sort count and support communities of need. Tom Garrity made a wonderful video summarizing the Grateful Market, and I want to show it to you. It's about a minute in length, but you will see the great work that Tom has done as he's been a welcomed addition to the communications team, and we're grateful that he's with us. And please just give him a nod when you see him because this is his work, and it is one Again, thank you to Tom for putting that together. Those videos tell the story a little bit better than me rattling on. And then it's another example of outreach to communities beyond our own, and I want to thank everybody who helped make that day possible. There are two opportunities to thank you for an absolutely thankless job at times. As school board members, the Illinois School Board Member Day was on November 15th. There is also a month that we, we often celebrate a little bit more in a grander state, which is January. But I wanted to make sure I took an opportunity to thank you all for your service. Some of us are going down to Chicago for the II Conference where we come together and we learn. I have the pleasure of seeing many superintendents across the country and hearing their experience with board members. And as a superintendent of two boards, it is refreshing when I can go around the country and say how strong, first they tell me I'm crazy for working with two boards, and then I tell them, well, they're two of the best boards I've ever worked for. I want to thank you for challenging me, asking tough questions, pushing and raising the bar for our students, and I just want to make sure that you know that while you don't hear thank you enough, we appreciate your leadership for the community and for our students. Thanksgiving is upon us. Next week, the holiday will be here. We are, the district is closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and this is just a moment to thank you all and hope you enjoy your time with your families. The Montgomery House will be full. We're planning a great deal of events because we have people come from Ohio. So wish me luck if you are traveling or if you're hosting. I hope everybody has a fantastic holiday. That concludes my superintendence report. I hope my mother wasn't watching the, Mom, I'm really happy you're here, and you're coming. If Mom is watching, I don't want to get in trouble. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Montgomery? Nope. All right. Public participation. The board will now hear public comment subject to Board Policy 2230. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold other comments until later. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to liaison reports. Mr. Adamo, do you have a report for True North?
True North held a lengthy meeting on last Wednesday. One issue that lurks for the board is the one district our friends in Glenview School District 34 are, may elect to withdraw from the cooperative. That would be, if that happens, if they decide to do that, which I must tell you I think is likely, they have to do that by January 1st, and we as a board will have to decide. There's a consent, consent procedure under our Articles Agreement with True North, how this board, what this board's stance is with respect to their withdrawal. That vote will have to take place within 60 days of our notice of the intent to withdraw. So that is something that lurks for us in the future.
So what would we be voting on in that instance?
The, we've signed, all of the districts that are members of True North have signed Articles of Agreement that work very much like an operating agreement or shareholder agreement you might see in a private, for a private corporation. There are two methods to withdraw from True North. One is withdrawal by consent. That's sort of the first and operative step that any, that we'll, that we'll face, whether we consent to their withdrawal. If they, if you look at the Articles of Agreement that we have with True North, if that fails, and I suspect that may be likely, who knows? We'll decide when we vote on it, if we have to vote on it. There's an alternative procedure by which they will, they can withdraw without consent, which is significantly more complex and involves going to get a number of approvals from the ROE, both in Cook County and Lake County, and we'll have more, I guess, to discuss on that when we, if that's a bridge that we have to cross.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the True North report? No?
Brief legislative report, there really has not been much happening in Springfield in recent weeks because all of their attention has been focused on the elections, which are now over. I expect there will be more coming up in coming months and in the new year. The other thing I wanted to mention on the liaison front regarding legislative issues is that at the II Conference this weekend, we will be voting on the IASB resolutions, one of which was cosponsored between District 67 and 115 regarding strengthening resources for faith law. We're obviously very proud to support that resolution, and hopefully all goes well this weekend when the full group of people at ISB votes on that. So that's it for the legislative report.
That one was recommended by the ISB.
Yes, it was, yes. Spirit of 67, Megan, is there anything to report?
No, there's no true report, but I just wanted to, in the month of November, Spirit of Thanksgiving is give thanks to all the people that support the Spirit and for all of the work that the Spirit of 67 volunteers do. They raise a lot of money to improve our schools and to give us those extra things that really help to make District 67 special. So thank you to the Spirit.
Thank you. Monica, anything to report on APT Exec Board?
Matt, pretty much went over all of the APT stuff I was going to mention because they were the special guests at the executive APT meeting. They went to the DPN APT meeting, like he also mentioned, and he also mentioned the service projects and the Grateful Market and the food drive. So thank you, Matt. Just a personal, though, on the, the food drive, though, I, I know how hard it is to pull all that stuff together at the school level and get it organized. pull all that stuff together at the school level and get it organized and delivered, and I've also been at the other end of delivering some of that food to the food pantries. There are a lot of places just north of here that really deal with food insecurity. So, projects like that seem like a fun competition for us, but it really is meaningful to the other communities. So, thank you to the APT for organizing that.
Any questions from the other board members? Nope. All right, we are going to move on to action items. The first action item is approval of the 2024 tentative tax levy. I will preface this by saying that we did discuss this at length in workshop, so there's already been an extensive presentation and discussion on the tax levy, which is why we're proceeding straight to the vote. And I should mention, this is the tentative tax levy, not the final tax levy at this point in time. May I have a motion to approve the 2024 tentative tax levy?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will move on to the consent agenda. We have a number of items listed on the agenda. I will not read them all, they're all available on the public record. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a question on, related to the IASB resolutions?
Yes.
On, here, on the, the bottom part represents the items that were not recommended by IASB. There is an option if it should be reconsidered, and you have to get two-thirds of the delegates to reconsider that. So, I don't know if we want to have consensus as a board on if we want any of those items to be reconsidered or just go along with what was recommended by the IASB. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. My view is to agree with the recommendations of IASB. I did not disagree with them. I know one of them that was rejected was a joint 67-115 resolution. Obviously, we still support that, but we, I at least understand the reasons why they did not want to advance it. Obviously, I open it up for any other thoughts from the board members as to whether or not they have a different view.
Agree with you too, Mark. I just, if I'm going to be voting on behalf of our board, I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
All right, any other?
So, it sounds like I am okay to, to vote no, that they should not be reconsidered, should it come to that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, may I have a roll call vote, please, for the consent agenda?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bernal?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have two FOIA requests, both of which have been completed and are available on the website. At this point in time, the board will now hear a second opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we just have a few announcements. Thanksgiving holidays coming up, which Dr. Montgomery already mentioned. We've got a policy committee meeting, a joint meeting with 115 on December 3rd, and then the next Board of Education meeting for District 67 is on December 17th, 2024. May I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for November 19th, 2024?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice, voice vote, please? All in favor, say yes.
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 Aye.